Meeting to order here. Y'all ready down there, man? First order of business is minutes of last, our last meeting. Did anybody get a chance to peruse those?
I did. I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion to approve. Anybody second? Got a second, McCliff? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, we're gonna switch up item number one with item number two, since the item number one applicant is not here yet. So we'll start off with ZV 4563, 111 Hamilton Street, St. Simons Island. Consider a request for a variance to the Glen County zoning ordinance, section 507.2B, use of substandard lots of record to allow more height, i.e. higher knee wall, in the half-story of the proposed one and a half-story, single-family dwelling unit. Due to the increase, due to the size of the lot, the dwelling unit is limited to a one and a half-story structure. The property is owned R6, one-family residential, and is located at 111 Hamilton Street, St. Simons Island. Shelley M. and James Franklin Renner, owners and applicants. Could we hear from staff?
Good morning, Board of Appeals members. Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. So this is number two on your agenda, which we will hear first to allow a little more time for the applicant for the first agenda item to arrive. So this is ZV 4563, 111 Hamilton Street. Here is the zoning map. This is St. Simon's Sound over this direction. This is Hamilton Street. There's a beach access at the end, and this is the property where the star is located. So they're requesting a variance to section 507.2B of the zoning ordinance, and this is the use of substandard lots of record, is the name of that section. And what they are requesting is to allow more height, primarily a higher knee wall, in the half-story of the proposed dwelling unit. So because of the size of this lot and the width of the lot, they are limited to only a one and a half-story dwelling unit. And so because of that, they cannot do a full two-story per the zoning, so they are asking for a little more room in this half-story. So that is why it's before you today. So the existing lot is a substandard lot of record. It is quite small, it's, I think, under 3,500 square feet. But it is, it is a legally plotted lot, so the lot was, we're showing it was surveyed in 1891, retraced in 1925, so we do consider it a buildable lot, just definitely more challenging due to its size. So they would like to do a five-foot knee wall in that half-story that would allow them more space on that second level. There was previously a one-story dwelling on the property. That house was demolished in 2019. The primary reason for requesting their additional space on that second level is to retain two significant trees on the property. So there's two live oak trees that are both over 40 inches diameter or breast height, and one is on the northeastern side, so they would like to increase their side yard setback to nine feet. It would be the required of seven feet, so they'd like to increase to nine feet. And then also recess that second story to allow the overhang of the branches and to really allow more of that open soil area around that tree, just to be able to save that tree, both on the side yard as well as the tree in the rear. So here is their site plan. This is Hamilton Street right here, so they do, they meet the zoning for seven feet on the sides and rear, and 20 feet in the front. They are showing a front porch, and then a back porch, and you can see the tree in the side yard setback. This dash line is the seven-foot required setback. As you can see, they are pulling that back further to nine feet to allow more room for this tree. And then in the rear, here is the tree in the rear yard, and they are, they're showing a deck right here, but this is all open soil area that they're showing in the back to allow for that root zone. There's just a zoomed-in version of, of their, their footprint. And then they also included a profile of the tree in the side yard setback. So it's a 48-inch live oak, and this is a view from the street, so just to show, you know, how that canopy comes over the, the property. So here are their proposed elevations for the front in the left. So this is where you can see they have pulled back this, this portion of the front to the nine-foot setback right here. And then on the second story, they've, you know, they have this half-story in this location to allow for that tree to kind of come over and have those branches, you know, come over the house without having to be taken down for the development. So here's some photos of the site. This is from Hamilton Street looking at the property. So you can see the true trees are here and in the back here. And then this bottom left-hand photo is the house on, if you're looking at the lot, on the left-hand side. And then this is just a Google street view of the home that was previously on the site that was demolished in 2019, and this just showed more of that canopy of that tree. And then also, the applicants had, had printed off abroad another photo of, of the tree and the canopy that is up at the dais, if you'd like to take a look at that. And then these are the existing homes across the street, just to give you a feel for kind of what the neighborhood looks like in terms of the architecture. So these two are across the street from the property. The applicant did reach out to a lot of their neighbors to get letters of support. So this diagram is what the applicants did submit, showing, showing the support. So the properties that are highlighted in green, we actually do have letters of support that were included in your agenda packet. And then the properties that are in gray, the applicants did reach out to the property owners, but we don't have a formal letter of support or opposition from those property owners. And then the yellow property is the subject property, 111 in Hamilton. So there was a lot of support for, for this project. So here are your possible motions. So staff's recommendation is to approve the variance with a condition. Prior to issuance of a building permit, a plan for tree protection shall be submitted to the county arborist for review and approval. I have been talking with our county arborist, and I also talked with the applicants, the renters, and they are open to this condition, just so we can make sure that tree is kept, has tree safe fencing, and has open soil area, and is kept in a healthy condition throughout construction as well as beyond. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and the renters are here to answer questions. And then we also have our building plans examiner, Dave Carver, and then our county arborist, Chuck Flowers, here today as well. Thank you.
Now, I guess we're ready to hear from the applicant. If you could step to the podium, give us your name and your relationship to the project.
Hi, good morning. Thank you so much. My name is Shelley Renner, and I, my husband and I own the property, and the reason we want to build there is, our family has been on Hamilton Street continuously for 75 years. My daughter grew up on that street. She lives in DC, and she wants to come home badly. And she, this house would be for her and her two children and her husband. They'll be permanent residents of St. Simons. And from the very beginning, it was important to all of us to protect those trees. We have a strong conservation ethic in our family, and so that was our goal. It was, but, but with the neat, with a two-foot knee wall, you can't, in avoiding the trees, you can't get enough height in the, in the second story to make, you know, to have bedrooms working around the, the tree. So that was, that was our goal, and it is to avoid, you know, damaging the trees. I appreciate your consideration.
Can you tell us who you are?
I'm Jim Renner. I'm Shelley Renner's husband, and I just want to clarify, the request for variance in no way changes the height of the house. The height of the house will still be compliant with the overall height limitation on undersized lots. All that changes is the height of the knee wall, so the roof pitch will go up a little bit so that we can have a usable bedroom upstairs. We would not need to request that variance if we cut down the trees and had a wider house footprint.
Footprint.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Anybody here for or against this application? Guess not. Any rebuttal or any, any discussion from y'all? I have a, I have a question for staff about this half, one and a half stories. My, I mean, when you tell me one and a half stories, to me that says one sto, half a story above, with a story above is half the size of a story below, not half the height. Isn't that right? Maybe I need to talk to-
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Mr. Carver to address that question.
Morning. Dave Carver with the Building Inspection Department.
Good morning.
Typically, a half-story can be anywhere from the knee wall from a foot to five-foot tall, but in our ordinance, it has a picture, and that's all we have to go by until the new ordinance, I guess, is getting altered, is a picture of a story and a half, and it shows the rafters terminating at the height of the first floor, at the plate of the first floor. So that means shorter knee walls, narrower rooms, and a shorter head height. More than likely, a vaulted ceiling.
Well, do you understand what I said?
Yes, yes.
Second floor being half the size of the first-
First, your first floor's 12 feet, you're looking at a six-foot knee wall, or 10 feet, and a five-foot knee wall.
Well, I'm talking about the square, the square footage of the, the first floor's 500 feet, then the second floor's 250 feet.
No, sir, we won't, we won't count that. We're counting the height.
The height?
Wall height.
And there's anything, there's, is there anything stated in the, in the code about-
IRC, no, sir.
About the height that needs to be?
No, sir.
So it has to-
Well, we do, we do have restrictions on, on bonus room, on bonus room ceiling height. Has to have a 50% average of seven feet or more. So your, your knee wall has to be inside your roof line, has to be five feet, but not at the plate, just the usable part of the room, to get your 50% of seven feet.
So the outside plate, your ra, the rafter has to hit the outside plate of the-
Typically, but we've been allowing a couple, two or three feet of a knee wall.
Of knee wall?
Yeah.
So you're allowed two or three feet? There's nothing that really states what that is?
No, sir.
So they're getting a variance for something that's really not written down?
They're getting, they're getting a variance against something that's a picture in our ordinance.
Yeah, the pi, that picture that-
Well, Eli says there is something in the ordinance that does define a knee wall of two or three feet.
Two or three?
Two feet.
Yeah, I would say a knee wall could go up to five or six feet. I'm just trying to clarify-
The knee wall we would be talking about is an exterior wall, not the interior use wall for your square footage.
So it has to be over the first floor plate?
Yes.
But the, but, and the picture shows, I believe it shows a, a single-story house with three dormers.
Yes, dormers, dormers don't count in the knee wall height. Dormers are, are there four, on a typical rectangle, because these lots are narrow, typical A-frame, in order, if you got a middle bedroom, there's no way to get a egress window in there, so you'd have to put a dormer.
So their effort is to get the, the rafter down to the wall plate, wall plate of the first floor? Okay. All right, thanks. As clear as I'm gonna get on that, I guess. Okay, any more discussion from staff regarding this application? It looks like everybody in the neighborhood approved it, and so, in the picture and the plan I'm looking at, the front elevation, my, my dimension on the first, the height of that second-floor knee wall is, I couldn't, I couldn't read it.
Like, five, five feet, is that correct? Yeah, five feet is what they-
Five foot, and that's what you're shooting for? Well?
With a five-foot knee wall, that will allow them to use the entire floor space upstairs.
Right. So that's, yeah, so that's-
If they want to, I mean, they could take their interior outside wall to eight feet and have a, you know, attic space in there, but they, it is usable if they go five feet, but they can use the entire footprint of the second floor, which would be beneficial.
So the code, does the code dictate a minimum height of a usable wall?
Yes.
Five foot?
Five feet.
Okay. Okey-dokey. Any more discussion?
If not, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion, and I agree with staff, we approve this variance with the following condition, that prior to the issuance of the building permit, a plan for a tree protection needs to be submitted to the county arborist for review and approval.
Can I just second on that? Well, for, would that, would arborist be involved throughout the building process, like to check on the, check on situation, or does he just go out there in the first, or how's, how's that work?
Yeah, yes, sir. He would be involved throughout the process, so there would be inspections and drive-bys and- But there, yeah, he would be involved in watching the project to make sure that it's complying with that plan throughout the construction period.
Okay, and, and you are, and I assume he's already looked at the plan, and he approves where, the way the foundation's laid out, and how the foundation will relate to the roots of the tree and all that stuff?
Yes, he, he did review the plans, as well as, we went out to the site as well to take a look at, at the trees and the plans, so, and I don't know if you, if anything more you want to add to that, but-
Chuck Flowers, the Glen County Arborist. We did review it. Just to clarify, we're, we're entertaining a tree protection plan to try to give this tree, these trees as much room as possible to grow. By industry standards and by the county ordinance for St. Simon's Tree Ordinance, which this isn't applicable to, this, they can't establish the proper tree protection and build on this lot the way they're trying to do it. So what we're doing, and this is an effort to review and to give them the best possible way to protect those trees with building this house. So it's, it's not a guarantee by us doing this, this is us giving the ch, the, the tree as much chance as possible to survive. It's in no way guaranteed that these trees will survive. There was a house there before, I'm not sure what the footprint of that house was on the lot, but the critical root zone, the structural root zone would take up half of the lot. So any, any construction, new construction on this lot is gonna have effects on the tree. Now, to what level that is, you know, our rule of thumb, you know, in the industry standard says you need this much protection, this much, we've all seen trees in the middle of roads with asphalt around them, these trees may last another hundred years, we don't know. So this tree protection standard is, is, if, if the variance is granted, and they're allowed to modify keeping these trees, this is us attempting to give these trees the best possible protection with this structure. It, it in no way protects all that needs to be protected, otherwise they wouldn't be able to build the house on the lot, period. So, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's trying to give it the best possible chance. It's just hard with a small lot like it is. So just, just so you understand, like, if this was, if this was a regulated site, like a commercial site, or a county right-of-way or county property, we wouldn't allow a structure this close to the tree, just because, you know, it's something we would regulate, we would have an interest in, in far as that we would be bound to regulate. Since this is their property and they, they want to try to save the tree, we're just offering to regulate and keep, you know, this is what, you know, this is the bare minimum that you have to have to try to save this tree, and we'll, we'll regulate through the process, enforcing that they can't, the, the tree protection plan that is established and approved, that we'll regulate that through construction and, you know, strictly regulate, and you can't, you know, work within the designated zones and everything. It's not 100% guaranteed that it's gonna protect these trees.
Your best effort?
What's that?
Your best effort?
Best effort, exactly.
Well, I've, I've uncovered, you know, building close to trees before, uncovered the major roots and tried to, tried to jump the foundation over the roots, the major roots, and that's the kind of thing you're gonna try to do?
Yeah, the house is built up off the ground, so that's good, I mean, and so depending on, and they're gonna need to get their own arborist to review the structural plans and what he recommends to submit, to prepare and submit a tree plan for us to review and agree with. But, yeah, there's, there's, depending on what they uncover out there, what kind of roots, you know, what major root systems there are, they may be able to do some bridging on foundations or any concrete and all, so the good thing is the tree, because there was a house there before-
Yeah.
You do have good open soil on either side of those trees that, I say good open soil, you have more open soil, and especially that, that tree at the rear of the property, they have a lot more open soil. So the chances are good, the tree's already kind of compensated for having a house there, and the root systems have kind of, you know, kind of grown around what, what they had. So, you know, there's some favorable things there. This is just us, you know, enforcing that they give that tree the best option that it, that it can with building on that lot.
Well, the previous house looked like it was kind of right on the, almost on grade, so possibly it was a slab.
Yeah, exactly, and so, you know, if anything, this may help, you know, not going back with a, with a slab on ground, so, so, you know, and we've seen a lot, like I said, we've all seen a lot, lot worse than this, and unfortunately, a lot of people have got a lot closer, cut major roots and done this and that, so it, for, for, for their interest, they would want to enlist their own arborist to put together, and, you know, a comprehensive plan beyond just the footprint of the building, but what they would need to do, you know- just the footprint of the building, but what they would need to do, you know, to try to preserve the trees in their interest as well. So that's what we want to do. We want to look at how they propose to, you know, protect the trees with their tree protection zones. You know, we'll work with them, modify what we think, you know, more or less or whatever. So, yeah, and then throughout the process, we'll, we'll do everything. We'll strictly enforce what is approved. So if they have a tree protection zone that is established and approved, that butts along the, the setback line or whatever it is, we'll strictly enforce that. Because unfortunately, with the nature of construction with trees, a lot of times, you know, people want to take the fence down and get in there and do what they need to and then put the fence back up, and any, any additional compaction and anything like that with trees that already have a certain amount of stress because of the limited open soil could be detrimental, so that's why we'll, we'll strictly enforce whatever we come to on approval for the protection, which isn't, the size of the lot and the size of open soil that is there, essentially all the open soil on that side of the, of the home and the rear will essentially be a, a tree protection zone. That's what we're looking for in a, in a tree plan.
Okay. All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Eddie, could you repeat that motion? We'll grab a second. Same thing as I'm written down, right?
Okay, so I agree with the staff recommends approval for the variance for the following condition. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, a plan for the tree protection shall be submitted to the county arborist for his review, review and approval.
Can I just second? All those in favor? All those opposed? You have? You got your variance? Okey-dokey. Moving on to the second thing on our agenda, or the first thing on our agenda, now the second thing. It's ZV 4594, located at 218 Military Drive, St. Simon's Island. Consider a request for a variance to the Glen County zoning ordinance, section 702, to allow for an encroachment into the front setback for a new carport accessory to an existing single-family residence. The property is zoned R12 and is located at 218 Military Drive, St. Simon's Island. Partial ID 04-00970. Lonnie Cat, agent for Derek Fowler, owner and applicant. Could we hear from staff on this matter?
Good morning. Eli, planning and zoning.
Morning.
As you said, we have a request for variance at 218 Military for a encroachment into front setbacks to allow for a carport. Again, like you said, the zoning is R12, which requires a 20-foot front setback. Previously, a permit was issued for this project that showed the structure meeting setbacks. The contractor, Mr. Lot, came back to us and said that their site plan was incorrect, there were some wrong dimensions that were taken, and that to be able to do the project as it was approved before, it would need a variance. Mr. Fowler has stated that the reason why the carport is needed is to provide cover for his powered wheelchair to prevent it from getting wet when ingressing and egressing a vehicle. And the proposal for the location of the carport is due to the current shape of the driveway. The project, the carport is supposed to be straddling the driveway, and straddling the driveway as it is now would put the carport in setbacks. Again, the proposed encroachment is three feet with an additional 18 inches of the eve of the carport, but the actual structural part of the carport would be at three feet into the 20-foot front setback. Here is your site plan on the left with a zoomed-in view on the right. The longer dashed red line is your setback line. The shorter dashed line shows where the structural foundations of the carport would go. That is your three-foot encroachment plus the slight extra encroachment from the eaves as you can see. Here is an elevation showing the carport with a simulated vehicle. This is your front and right elevations if you're looking at the property. And here are your possible motions. Staff does recommend denial based on the fact that the project was not shown to move the carport to potentially meet setbacks. It was just brought forward on the existing plan.
Could you repeat that last part of the project?
Because the variance is, the variance is just trying to modify the previous plan that was approved that showed the carport meeting setback, changes were not shown to make the carport meet the setbacks once the error was realized.
Okay. This may be a question for the applicant, I don't know, but were those changes not made because they were trying to adapt to the existing driveway?
Again, you'll have to ask the contractor, the applicant.
Okay, all right. You done?
Yes.
Any, any questions for Eli? Well, I have, I have one here on the, I guess on my second page here, and the information that you gave is item D, special conditions or circumstances do not result in the action or actions of the applicant, self-imposed hardship, and the original permit was issued on 11/4/2020, showing the carport met the required front setback. The contractor returned to staff saying their site plan was incorrect and the carport would be in the setback. Staff was not told whether moving the carport or driveway were considered. The placement of the carport is? That's all it says?
Oh, placement of the carport is in setbacks.
Is, oh, in the setback, okay. All right. Okay. All right, I guess we're ready to hear from the applicant or the applicant's agent. Step, step to the podium and give us your name and situation.
Hello, I'm Lonnie. I'm with Belfour Property Restoration, where the contractor has been hired to do the building of the carport and some other various repairs to the property. When we had this initial layout done by our engineer, there was a mistake that was made in the, in the setback and where that location was. We, we thought initially it was off the, the driveway. And we built, you know, we, we did our plans based on that. It's when I got there to do my layout of the carport based off of his drawing, and we quickly realized that the, the setback was literally on the concrete portion of the driveway. So that's when I, I stopped everything at that point and then got back with building coach to let him know that, hey, we, we have an issue here. I had a new set of plans drawn up, which have been submitted to the building coach's department reflecting, you know, this change, which now does put it into the setback based on what was, what's stated there. We had considered the changing of the driveway. The problem with that is the angle that you would have to come in with a vehicle and be in a van, a larger vehicle, you are at a very tight turn at that point, and changing the driveway and making that turn is just not going to be possible and, and be able to clear the poles and what have you. In essence, the new plan for the carport is to literally make it three feet wider, to be able to be off of that edge of the concrete. We want to just be off of that edge is what we're looking for.
So you're not changing, you're not changing, doing any change in the driveway itself?
No, the plan was not to do any changes to the driveway just because of the angle and how you would have to turn. If I was to keep my plan as it was, you know, prior, the, the turn, there would be a significant turn to go into the carport, which would require a very significant change to the driveway to make that, that happen, which would involve trees and, and what have you as well.
Yeah, it looked like a lot of trees there on the front.
There's, there's a lot of trees.
Okay. All right, any guy, anybody got any questions for the applicant? Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody here for or against? No public comments? Do y'all have any discussion or anything you want to clear it up, or you got any comments?
I mean, it, it appears to me that there's no self-inflicted hardship on this, on this project at all. I mean, it's, is what it is. Personally, I don't have, I don't have an issue with this one.
Yeah, I went out there and looked, and it looked like to me that, I mean, I can see, understand the need for the canopy and with its trees, I mean, there, there's trees on both sides of where they're talking about putting this thing. And, you know, considering the need, it seems like to me that it might be something, I mean, it's just a, it's just a canopy, really. One thing I was wondering on the section showing the, maybe you could step back to the podium, the section showing the, all right, this is a question, but it looks like the canopy is going to go over the existing roof.
It is.
It's not tying into the existing roof.
It is going over the existing roof of the house. It is not tying into the house in any way, shape or form. We did not want to create a situation to where we were going to have to take the existing building and then incorporate that into the, to the carport. We didn't want that at expense in the, the design. We wanted it to where it would actually hang over the existing roof of the house. I have one pole which will go through the soffit and through the roof to be able to get the, the overhang, but other than that, there's no weight bearing going to be on the house itself.
Well, it looked like to me the intent, you know, is to keep them dry going inside, and it looks like to me that the water is going to go under the new roof.
We're going to have a high-flow gutter system which is going to be tied to the house.
Catch that water for it.
To catch that water and get it away from that, that sidewalk area.
Okay. All righty. Mr. Carver, you got?
Dave Carver, Glen County Building Department. This house was, if they would have attached that, would have been really close because they're doing interior renovations, would have put the house really, really close to substantial improvement where they would have to raise the foundation up, so.
If they attached it?
If they would have attached it. So since it's detached, it's called, it's an RAB, so they have two separate permits on this, one for the interior of the house, one for this, because it's not physically attached to the house. So they were able to keep the cost down for FEMA, for the 50% rule.
Oh.
Okay. That's the only reason for other, other reasons than what they stated, to keep it detached. It's basically a detached structure.
So it's not included, the value of that's not?
Not included in the value of the main structure for, for FEMA regulation.
I'll bear that in mind.
Yeah, so it's just like if you were renovating a house and you wanted to build three or four accessory buildings out, it doesn't add to the value of the house, just whatever is attached to it.
Yeah, but he always tells me I can't. Okay.
That's a guest house.
Yeah, bingo. All right, I'm ready for a motion down there.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ZV 4594 as submitted.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those against? We got our variance, unanimous. Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, any other business to discuss? If not, I'll gavel or closed.